So, I believe that we have really dealt with this what is all about and this. And now we are going into the next section, section two, and it has to do with theories. Remember we said that a lot of people define law in various ways. They had their way of defining laws. And these things were like theories. Theories, they are postles, what we call them theory, you know, is what they thought, is what they thought on their mind. In sciences, it is not scientifically proven. So they have these theories written down, so we look at them. There are several generally accepted theories concerning the origin of law. A theoretical viewpoint governs the way that a social phenomenon is seen and understood. The theory of law means where law came from. Why it developed as it did. So this is what these theorists are talking about. Now, theoretical perspective of law. There are different writers, so we are going to look at those writers. In order to successfully answer the question, what is law, one was delve into jurisprudence. You know, in law, there are a lot of challenges. We are now seeing another one, same jurisprudence. Juris is a Latin word for law. So it has to do with an environment, state, the kind of law that governs that particular state. The kind of law that is in place in Nigeria is not the kind of law that is obtained in England, US or even Afghanistan. There are differences, those areas are all judicial, and they have their own jurisprudence. So jurisprudence is the study of legal philosophy. Since philosophy consists of one's belief about something. A full answer to the initial question, what is law, is provided by examining the belly of distinguished writers to see what they perceive law to mean. Now, like I said before, a lot of theorists, they have came up with their own ideas, the way they see it, the way they view law, and we are going to look at some of these things because they became so important that they brought about a lot of input into development of law as a cause. A very few of writers on law have come to be known as philosophies of law, schools of jurisprudence and theories of law. There are different theories, a school of thoughts. One, we have natural law theory, we have positive law theory, we have pure theory, we have historical theory, we have sociological theory, we have, we are theory. We have the functional theory and the rest theory. These are theories that are in law. So we are going to look at this theory one after the other, so that within the space of time, we have, we are good to look at their characteristics, what they are talking about. One, the natural law theory. Natural law theory holds that there are a master moral standard that are inherent in mankind throughout all time. Natural, universal, accepted law. Somebody just came home and saw what happened in his environment. And if he begin to, because of what he met on, that was his self as a result of his going to be in that environment, he will begin to model himself in line with that kind of character. That was indeed society within that environment, he fit as going in the wrong way. So this kind of concept, it was passed from the universal moral life. Who are these, are not of natural laws, passive, warrager. We discover it by us when we making choices for good instead of evil. That's natural. There are these things that what we are doing is right, what are doing is wrong. Whether it's in or not, you know that those things are not the law in the society. Those things span from natural law. Some schools of thought believe that eternal law is passed to humans, they are divine persons. Though, although natural law mainly applies to the realm of ethics and philosophy. You know, like I said, it's something that you are just, you just grow to see, begin to obey it, you know, not that they are codified, codified by qualification, I mean, written down everywhere. But you took, you saw them, saw the people, the one people we are doing it, and you began to, and you abide it. That's what natural law is talking about. So I believe the natural law theory, all people have compared rights from far, not by the act of legislation, but by God. Now, law by the definition means the law that where the, they don't sit together, look at the beefs, and after, you know, the divisions, pass the beefs, and make it a law. But in this natural law we are talking about, it is not that kind of rigorous activity. It just came as a result of nature, as a result of more and more fears and sieges in the environment. So by natural, they say it comes from God or by reason. Natural law is simply what is right, just and fair. The prominent of natural law theory as Zeno, Thomas, Apollias, and Goethe, these are major components of this law. So, you have even one of them, it's very relevant. That the natural law has been the basis, no, the natural law has been the basis for a way of revolution's progress. In a shame, if you can just go there, we go to there, we understand how this natural law that came into place, and how we helped to build what we call the body of laws now, this whole human life. We have some criticism on this natural law. Some people said, no, ah, what they are saying about natural law is not true. They have their own opinion, but that doesn't make it not to be very valid. So the reason why we saw you as a student of law, you can only look at that, maybe you are only good, you can criticize it. So, so the more you can come up with theories, and people will criticize you. So there are some deep criticisms, criticisms that we needed to look at briefly by some of the philosophers. He said, there are numerous criticisms on the theory of law. The natural law philosophers look to the right reason as a guide for designing the most perfect forms of law. You know, right reason, I want to do something that is right, that comes from natures. You know, it should be quantitativistic. It's a criterion that cannot be verified through empirical scrutiny. You cannot measure it. You cannot say, the level of what I know to be right is the same thing with the next person nearby. It cannot be measured, it cannot be let out now. So that is the challenge. All night you're corresponding on law, waiting in the books. Once you be there, then you know that feeling is still. That's law. So for this one is, it can be said to, ranging in different perspectives. So it cannot be totally, you know, scrutinized. Another weakness of the natural law is, what is there in multiple conscious problem. I've already explained that. So what I believe as my conscience will not be able to feel that is said, so this has been the problem. And probably, the theory could be, could lead to a lack. If anyone is left to act according to the notion of what he feels is right, you know, I fear that packing my vehicle in front of this place, in front of there, that way there is a right to do, I'll just pack it and leave. Someone else will come and say, no, this stuff does not supposed to be so, that what's right is right to me, I fear that it is a right to do. So if we allow this kind of law, you know, there's going to be various opinions, and there will be debate between you two. So, and that will be very exciting. We now go to into the next theory, and that is the positive theory of law. This theory of law is inspired by John Austin, or many people calling him Jay Austin. He proposed a command theory of law which is regarded to as positive school according to him and his book. The progress of jurisprudence, it has been, he defined law as command sent by spillo to inferior and enforced by sanctions. Sent by spillo to inferior and enforced by sanctions. You know, that is the definition of law. By this definition, it means that the only thing that a regulator has got are those, are those that are elected by person authorized to do so. The definition has the flowing elements. One, the existence of definite sovereign. Who is the sovereign? A sovereign is a set of authorities backed by law. Where somebody is regarded as the head, running is to put first, and we say Nigeria is a sovereign state. Who is the head of the sovereign state? You have a president. So he is saying that this kind of law, this kind of law economy is such that the people that are in the helm of authorities, they issue this law to regulate the activities of inferior, the people that are, they are ruled, you know, the people that are governing, and follow it over the sanctions, because you must issue a rule without sanction. So, the sovereign is without legal limitation in the sight of his power. They can do anything as long as he is a guy that says it is fine. So that's in the state of what he is talking about. The sovereign must be in the habit of obeying him because of his class power to impose sanctions. He has the power, the sovereign have the power to force or enforce such kind of law. And then, the Austinian definition of law has been inside of many grounds that we are talking on the theory of, as meeting by John Austin. First, these are the criticisms. Laws are not always hatched in an imperative manner such as shan't, shan't, as prompted by Austin. Austin's theory says that there are those, they shan't, they shan't, like a command, which must be obeyed. So, but the criticism is saying, no, laws are not always like that. Laws must have a soft point, a soft point. It must have some, you know, some element of, you know, not just threat and sanctions, but elements of peaceful disposition to make it work. Now, the second criticism against this theory, said that law is what the sovereign say it is. That is, any authoritative lawmaker acting with the scope of his legislative power has to be obeyed. Whether he is wrong or not, you must obey, once issue comes from the authority, it must be obeyed. No. So, a school of law says, no, that it does not examine the goodness and badness of the rules. So, which means the authority might come up and say, everybody in this environment must obey. I say, because he has given an order, everybody must obey. So these things are the deficient that we have in this theory as presented by Jay Austin. So, all the positive laws are concerned about is whether the lawmaker is legally authorized lawmaker. Against the background, it does not require much of my days to realize that the theory can be, can be a decision for detestation and total derision. We have had some issues of queer this kind of attitude. Like in the realm of people like Hitler, they became absolutely powerful because they were operating this kind of, they have this kind of mentality of law according to Jay Austin, and it is, it has not progressed well. Such societies are bound to fail. Detestation will not last because people will definitely revolt against it. They test this, they say the idea of an uncommanded command that is only possible in absolute detestation. Where the society is governed not by law, but according to the winds and capacities of the dictator. Nobody, including the sovereign, is above the law, even under a military government. So, these are some of the criticisms. The next one. The false criticism, Austin means the point, when he was said that everybody usually obeys the law because of fear of sanction by the sovereign. That was what he said, that what makes people obey the law is because of the sanction. But it is not always right. People may decide to obey because of their own feeling. People might began, because they obey the law because of what they think about the society. People may still say they are not going to obey the law, if you misfeeling them, you can go ahead and kill them. So these things, he said, many obey the law not because of sanction, yes, but because it has caused with their normal way of life, and because they see as God do, and that bring the teeth in place. For example, not all smokers refrain from smoking in public places because of existence of law that will be smoking in public places. Similarly, not everyone refrains from committing more than because it is punishable under law. Irrespective was the existence of law. So either the natural inclination or belief, our law could be disposed to smoking in public or killing their fellow human being, we already explained that. So we go to the next theory, the theory, the pure theory of law, the theory, he said, theory presented by Sonar Kersley. He described this as nonsensical. Like I said, these are different ideologies, different people seeing the law from various perspectives. Imagine another proof, saying that all Jane, Austin and Don is discussable. You know, let's look at what he is talking about. So, he has said, law is a system of norms. A law is valid if it has been created by a norm, which he said has been created by a higher norm within the legal order. That is the line of thought. The logical connection of laws in this order will continue until we arrive at law law later, which is the grand norm. One norm to the other, the smaller to the people, until we have a grand norm. Like in Nigeria, for instance, you say, the grand norm of the country is the constitution. That every other thing you are doing, once it is not in line with the constitution of the federal republic of Nigeria, which is the grand norm, it will not be implemented. So, grand norm is the basis, is the main thing. So why can't grand norm be generated from the grand norm, and their validity is traceable to eat? The original validity of grand norm is traceable, is not traceable to eating law. Thus, the law forbidding the killing of another person is, in certain circumstances, a radical order is valid because it is made down in criminal code. The criminal code is valid because it was enacted by the legislature. The law made by the legislature is valid because the legislature, the legislature has been constituted, and the functioning and accordance with the value of law. The constitution is valid because it has been propagated into law as an act of the people. You look at the sequences of how these things, you know, work. You cannot say you have a governor who is now talking on different order, and people will obey it. We cannot have a law back in it. Before he became a governor, there is a law that was enacted, that the people say, we want to have a government system, where we have the presidency, the state, and every four years we will come together and conduct election. Without that, we will not emerge. And almost that four years in that is, there is nothing that we make him to stay more than a day, even a half hour in that office. That is the law. So that is what he is trying to say, that this laws are creating the higher norm. The main argument of the whole theory of law is that, the legal validity of each rule is that being simply by reference to the question whether it has been laid down or listed in accordance with whatever requirements are displayed by legal system in question. The theory has been criticized, no, there must be criticism. We've seen what he said, and then we are going to look at briefly at the criticism. The first criticism, the first person, the first criticism is, on the kind that expresses the formal validity of law, rather than dysfunction, and they said in society. That's the best criticism, that the interest of Professor Kersley is on the formal validity of the law, and not dysfunction or diseffect in the society. That is, the theory of law concerned, he said, with the content of the law, instead, he is just looking about, just alright, moral, immoral, any rule that's in five of formal criterion to be selected will be regarded as law. You know, that is his own opinion, and people are looking at it. So, the third thing, it has failed to address issues that touch and concern the existence of humankind and sound as a ready tool for detestation. Again, we are, people are narrowing down to detestation, just like it was in the, in the case of just Jay Austin. So, because people who already want to have control over others, and the law, or ready to, or school of thought that cannot be able to tackle this area has a lot of deficient, just as what he's been saying this one too. They said, oh, it is not easy, it is not easy, if not impossible, to determine the grand norm in the modern society. The vision that the constitution is the grand norm is only a legal vision because it can be proved further. Like I said before, that constitution is grand norm, but this formulation is not saying that it can, it has to be pruned. So who created the constitution? In the process, in the process of Nigerian experience, the military or the people, we took that answer. How did the constitution, we are using in Nigeria, a constitution of 1999, that, you know, people are now beginning to amend happily came into place. You know, is it the military or the people? Why the addition? It means that something is wrong somewhere. And they thought theory of constitution that they consider the grand norm a code good when there is a vital faith in legal order. Through the emotional change of all men, the validity of a norm depends on the effectiveness of legal order and all the constitution. For instance, before now, in the, in a country, you know this, we have a country called Afghanistan. There are a system of government that before now have been in a system, being championed by the government in Kabul. Very suddenly, there was a revote, and a group, not a parliament, pulled down the system of government. They have a constitution, but because there is a revote, the small constitution was thrown out of, you know, power, and the parliament came up with their own court. So he has justified a lot of criticism, saying that in a situation like that, constitution will no longer be a grand norm. So the next one. The history of law, this is another school of thought, the theory was promoted by Frederick Carl Savygi, Carl von Savygi, a German, a German aristocrat. The theory was promoted in order to counter the influence of natural theory of law in overthrowing monarchs in 17th and 18th century Rome. The theory is of the view that laws should be made according to the custom of the people. The custom referred to as voters is the spirit of the people, which binds them together. Thus, attempts, attempts should not be made to make laws that will be viewed for the custom and the ways of life of the people. So what is, is what is saying? He's saying that law ought to emanate from the custom of the people. How people does their own things, what is, you know, common in their own environment, not just throwing up a law, angry to the environment, that is his formulation. That law ought to emanate from the custom, the people's way of life, that is own. So one of the criticisms against this school of law is the fact that it is followed, it followed dogmatically. It would hinder that they had reforms, which will turn out to be good for a society. You know, for instance, like I said, I gave example of what is happening in Afghanistan. Afghanistan, for example, women are allowed to, and they are not allowed to drive, they are not allowed to move freely in society without a male counterpart. You know, those things are only to foreign, to the modern society. But you see such things in place, manifested from the custom of the people, over the people. So he is saying that these things are all ought to give way to the, but the critics are saying more. Now, this kind of thing means that the rights of people will be in physical form. For instance, the way it mean law in the country are for mention. One can only imagine how backward the society will be if strange customs like slavery, absolute monarch, monarch, we are not abolished, you can, you know, feel the impossibility, call what it means for somebody to be a slave, a slave, a man getting from one's custom. I'm going to do this now. Another criticism on this theory of law is the fact that it is not an overnight, that customs are fair and just. There are a lot of customs that signify a particular person of people. For instance, in India, where the common people, they task the slaves and all these things. These are people that were better than war, but look to their custom. Some people are viewed as more important, are more human than others, which is not supposed to be, so be absorbed. So in such, in such, in such cases, you discover that there are a lot of customs that signify as classes of people. If this theory is to be followed to the letter, it will input this people into a better condition. In Nigeria, customary rules are only applicable where they are deemed to satisfy the three major tests. The tests are, if it is not repugnant to ensure justice, equity and good conscience. You can look, check the evidence at section 18, contrary to the public policy, incompatible directly or by necessary implication with any law for the time being enforced. There are social theory. Social theory was formulated by Jean as their partner. So they were the prominent scholars under the social school of law. According to them, there are relations between law and society as societal conduct, and that each has effect on other. The strict conduct, that means the rule made that a legal such as status and society is necessary. So, strict value and conduct, that means the meaning of law and all the rules laid by the sovereign. They are saying, they say, it was, it was the view of law. They say, it was, it was the view of law. Therefore, any was of the view that one could not appreciate the law of the society by many reasons to the forebend legal source, rather, one should go to the society to understand how the law is obeyed, how it is executed, modified, or submitted by society. Why conduct can influence the law as argued by this school? This school is talking about that conduct can influence the law. So it hinges this whole line of thoughts about conduct that can always influence the law. Pam, anybody, eh Pam was a commander of Harvard Law School. So it's where he has a different idea of sociology, cult school. That is different from energy. His argument is based on competing claims by society giving the needed resources available for humans, according to him. A satisfying human wants, balancing, balancing is necessary among the competing claims in such a way to avoid disruption in established institution. The institutional analysis here will be that the cost system will be that of the cost system and other arms of comment. Pam attaches that weight on value system. His major point is on value system, what the society tends to value. However, Pam's theory of balancing competing claims, made to provide a scientific approach in assessing this. His argument appears to attract more weight for value, which will prevail against what is right and fair. However, Pam's analysis of balancing has received some attention in law courts as means of resolving, as means of resolving competing claims. This is what Pam is talking about. Now, there are some social school of law, however, also has its own share of criticism. As usual, like I said, you will always see, people will not always agree with all these thoughts. And what the first criticism says, it is not all the time that conduct influences law. There are situations in which law influences the conduct. That's what the school is, that's the first criticism saying, there are situations where the advice indicates, but always the way they have put it. So there are situations in which law influences the conduct of members of the society. For instance, very good owner, register their purpose because of law managing them to do so. That's why they register their purpose. Another criticism is the fact that it describes risk to obey the law just because everyone, every other person is obeying the law will not excuse and offend a who is caught and is being made an escape route. So like every other person is disobeying the law, you know, it's not excuse for that maybe go and do the same thing and what, and this thing can be called eh an escape route. So that's one of the criticisms. So it doesn't flow with social. Then the next, the next theory of law is eh, it's libertarian law, theory of law. And the chief opponent of this law theory is Jeremy Beter. According to his theory, law should encourage communal utilities, which is in this, which is, which in this conference is about people's happiness. This man is talking about what makes people happy. So law have to do with what makes people happy. But you know, do we say that, okay, let's look at it and the greatest good of the greater member of the people should be the basis of mega proper rest society. That is what Pam is, he defined four major utilities, which include security, equality, liberty and of course, to attend the referendum. The law must balance the individual interest with that of community interest. The freedom of individuals can be sacrificed or put in to achieve better good for the society. For example, the law allows the police to prevent the privacy of suspected armed armed robbing him of his liberty in order to guarantee the security of the society. The main criticism of this school, like I said, there's always the criticism. He said, the main criticism of this school is that it does not resolve the issue of balancing both both individual and community interest, neither does it the hardest to achieve this. Now, he is talking about, he is talking about eh, no, no. He is talking about the communal interest against individual interest. He was stressing on the communal interest. But the issue is that when you be, in people, individual interest as a lot of communal interest, you are putting on people's side. So that's the major challenge he have. So let's go to the next slide. The functional theory, the theory of law, this theory of law is championed by distinguished United States jury. Oliver Whitehead, Pope St. John. His book is that law is what the court says it is. He said that the law should be viewed from the perspective of the bad man, according to him, the bad man doesn't give two roots about legal theories or he cares about, it's what they call from the side, the institution. He views, because he views the whole line of law, law, what should, law should be talking about is advanced bad man, you know, in quotes, wrong doer. Because what the wrong doer is interested in knowing is, what will the court say about this issue? Will their chance be, will their sentence be, that is what the man that is committing eh crime is thinking about. And this school of law is talking about, you know, based on this feeling of this man. So this not just regarding what is contained in the statutes, see if it is a code that has been agreed the law. The law will be what the court will ask you to be. That's why you go, you give the same matter, eh the same matter, the same issues, the same everything to different judges. They are pronouncing, they are jumping by value, you know, the cost, they see it from various angles. At the end of the day, you may receive conflating judges because the conflating judgment as a result of the way the jury is viewing it. One of the criticisms against this school is that it only concentrate on the cost and it lost enough the legislative and administrative authority. This is arguably erroneous, considering the fact that the court issued a situation of the statutes. Imagine, the court, you know, will now be issuing order against the, the, the institution that made it. So it's unfortunate for that is what the problem that is associated with functional theory of law. The rest of the law, the realist, and this school is of American origin is described to be people like, this is subscribed to by people like Oliver, Wendy Holmes, Jerome Frank, John Chapman, Greg and Carl, and a lot of them. This school posits that law is not just what is in the book and the silent cases. They are all, they are of the view that a judge and jury in making their decisions are influenced by external forces. Judges may be flamed and affected by extricable factors much more than evidence abused in trials and arguments of the parties. In the silent case, judges may be affected by the way of life, intellectual background, what they did, like or dislike, color or age. For example, if a judge that has been evicted of rape or exposed to a victim tries and a kills rapist, there is every likelihood that she would want him to go scot free due to her previous issue. That, sorry, there is every likelihood, likelihood that she will not want him to go scot free due to her previous experience. Also, a judge who is handling the trial of a former colleague will be lenient compared to the trial of an accused who is not related to him. It's just very simple. We are talking of, they are talking of the human factor in your impressions of the judges. Their state of mind, their experiences in life, and considering their family issues. You know, which can brought up, you know, as a human being, they will call all those things to the cops. And those things will eventually influence their mind of thought for the day. Now, this school in fact reforming the judicial system. They will view that the judge should constantly find their best in order to be objective in deciding a particular case. Scholars have argued that there is no such thing as great release school and that the so-called realism and experimentalism and constructive and such theoretical concept to your respect. So these are some of the things they are talking about. They is majorly of how to, you know, condition the mind of eh judges. For instance, that's why in Nigerian system, judges are not allowed to get involved in most societal activities, open interviews and all this. So that they can really do it, attempt to take the external factors that may influence the opinion of the judge over his, this is going to the next slide. Conclusion, it is impossible to say that many of the philosophers who presented their book theories came from significant targets, vagrants and orientation. A good number of them came from academics of various disciplines, including law, history and philosophy and so forth. Other scholars, judges and so forth. The difference is in their orientation, background and experiences. Not that inform their major concern of law from different viewpoints. An example is that, is that a legislator, a legislator's concept of law might be quite different from that of judge. Same across to include him, that in his analysis of law in comparison with an accused standing trial in the court. Given development, it is rather safe to submit all definitions relatively arbitrary and hard. No definition is universally accepted and there is no definition of law to end all definition. So which means, pardon me, some other schools of law can still emerge tomorrow. So it depends on the environment.